We don't have much of a crowd. We're ready when you are. I'm gonna go right to the engineer as soon as we do a roll call, if you don't mind.
I'm doing a moment of silence. I think once for Sam G. Belisco. Good evening, everyone. We're gonna call to order the agenda meeting of Marshall Borough Council, July 9th, 2019. If I could ask you tonight, please, during our moment of silence, to remember Sam G. Belisco. He represented the first ward for several terms years ago. He also has, people know him from Sam's Shoe Repair up in Shop and Center by Giant. Very nice man. He passed away recently. So if you all remember him in your moment of silence tonight, and then we'll have our pledge allegiance after that, and then we'll begin. So if you all, please, rise. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And if we can have a roll call, please, Virginia, it's okay.
Here.
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 Thank you. Before we proceed into any part of the agenda tonight, we have, tonight here are engineers for Gilmore and Associates, Kurt Schroeder and Alora Das. I wish for your last name, Das. It should be so easy. And they're gonna talk a little bit tonight about the grant for the pit area.
This is 9B on your agenda.
Good evening. This is an update on the project that we refer to as Melvin Avenue Basin. If you don't recall, this is a stormwater basin that the borough owns and maintains as part of the ongoing NPDES stormwater requirements mandated by the DEP. We're obligated to do pollution reduction plan projects to try to reduce sediment in the watersheds. So this site was selected as an appropriate facility to accomplish that objective, and we got that approved by DEP as part of our permit. And we were early in getting any permits under this program. So we were fortunate to have received the permit in time to then proactively submit last year for a grant to cover the construction costs. And we were very fortunate to not have too many competitors in that grant, because, again, we were early, and we were able to successfully secure $187,000 in grant funds. $165,000 of that is slated specifically towards the construction. So over the past several months, we've been working on the design of this basin, to put together the construction drawings, getting all the necessary permits to put the project out the public bid. We placed the project out the public bid. We received bids on July 3rd, and we received one bid. Not very surprising, given the construction climate that we've been dealing with over the last several years. Contractors are extremely busy, so much so that we're literally calling and begging contractors to bid projects. So having very little participation in the bids, it's also not surprising that the only bid that we received was for $228,000, which is significantly above the budget and the grant funding. So we're recommending this evening that that bid be rejected, based on lack of available funds, and that we recommend, at this point, that we try a couple different things. We're not sure that there's a potential to, quote-unquote, "value engineer" the project. In other words, can we pare this thing back so far that we can close the gap in the lack of funds? We can try that. We think there's ways where we might be able to do that. And how do we do it? Well, we have to meet a certain objective. So DEP wants us to hit a certain milestone with the amount of reduction in sediment removal. So we can't pare it back too far. The beauty of this project, while it's an unfunded mandate and we're required within five years to construct it, per DEP, it's actually a positive in that, right now, the basin is a challenge. It's absolutely saturated. Literally feet of mud exist in this thing, and with the weather we've had the last two summers, it just hasn't stopped raining, to the point where Public Works physically can't even put equipment in there to mow the grass, as they would like to. So as part of this retrofit to this basin, long-term, it would be designed in a way that it would reduce the maintenance going forward for Public Works. That's a big positive. So we don't want to scale the project back so far that we aren't trying to eliminate that challenging maintenance issue. We want to at least keep the project intact to the point where we meet our goals and objectives with DEP, but we also deliver a basin that is carefully designed, constructed, and provides low maintenance going forward. Part of the challenge with the project, too, and it's reflected in the bid, and part of the unfortunate thing about competitive public bids, is there's quite a bit of risk in this type of job. We've done them before. We've seen the risk firsthand. Contractors hope that they can bid a job for $228,000 and knock it out for $150,000. That's when things go well. Things don't go well, and they're literally getting stuck in the mud, and their equipment is challenged with removing this material. And there's no bottom to the mud that they're digging in, and it goes horribly wrong. Then they're hoping that, for $228,000, they get out of here without too much financial damage, and we've seen it happen on similar projects in Bucks County. So there's a lot of risk there. They have to cover their risk by what they represented in this bid. We've talked to them. We think, and they agree, that there might be ways for us to help reduce their risk by analyzing the soils a little bit more carefully and determining whether, instead of them removing all that soil and then bringing in expensive new soil, maybe we can work with the soil that's there, let it dry out, make it workable, and leave it there. Now, it's a challenge with Conservation District. They don't really like that. When you dig up a basin, especially something that collects all the water, you're supposed to stabilize it as quickly as possible, to let this soil sit there and dry out again. Not an ideal situation. So it's a very complicated, we're trying real hard since these bids came in, to find the best recommendation going forward. So we also are looking at the other side of the coin. Can we find more money? We think there's a possibility. There's a grant with DEP, Growing Greener. It's a DEP grant. It's another state grant. You can use that grant to match against this WRPP grant that we already received. Fortunately, that application period is opening up in the next month. So if we apply for it, and we're successful getting it, we probably would find out sometime in the fall, depending on how quickly Harrisburg selects the projects and announces the awards. We think you have a favorable chance of getting it, because we already have the match money. We already have the project designed and permitted, and it's literally shovel-ready. That's exactly what they want. They want those projects so they can fund them and get that money spent quickly. They don't like projects that may never happen or that are a long shot. So we should score very well. That'll push the project, at best, into the spring. Who knows what the construction, climate, and economy looks like then? If we're not successful, we're standing here in the same exact position that we're in now, still short on funds. So we have options. There's no perfect option. There's no definite option, I guess. So tonight, we're probably recommending to you that we explore each of those options, maybe come at it with a multifaceted approach. Maybe we work on trying to reduce some of the risk to the contractor. We work on trying to value-engineer the project while we pursue extra funds in that grant program. And whichever option makes itself available is perhaps the option that we end up pursuing.
How much funding are you looking of going after? And I don't want those grants, how much they have to work with.
Yeah, well, I mean, we really would want to dig into that grant application more carefully and understand exactly what they'll fund, what they won't fund. It's a very long shot, but there's maybe a chance that we can ask for more money than we absolutely need. And it's a long shot, but perhaps they may even help cover some of the costs we've already incurred, because the design costs were the match for the last grant. It's a long shot, maybe an impossible feat, but we want to look at that, because if we're gonna go that route, we want to try to maximize the amount of money we can bring in. It's a challenge with grants. Had we, perhaps we had gone for $275,000 and really aimed high with this last grant that we went for, we'd be sitting pretty right now. We'd have plenty of money to construct it, but we may not have gotten that grant, because they may not have given us that much money. So it's a double-edged sword. You don't want to ask for too much, and you don't want to ask for too little. In hindsight, we wish we had asked for more, obviously, but that was a pretty difficult thing to predict. And just a point that I wanted to make tonight is, you say, "Well, why didn't we ask for more?" You know, hindsight's always 20/20. Keep in mind, when we ask for this money, it's before there's any feasibility engineering or anything that's been done. We had not had soil testing done. We did soil testing, but we hadn't had that information when we first started budgeting this. So, you know, a lot of things happened, and truly, it's a reflection of the construction climate. It's just, everybody's busy. You call bidders, they're just not, and it's a risky job, too. It really is a risky job for contractors. So if they can guarantee to go make an easy project go smoothly, you know, they're not gonna mess around with a project that has this much uncertainty in what they'll encounter, just like we encounter. How, what are you really, what are you really getting into? You don't know until you're in there. Unfortunately, like I said, we don't have the flexibility of bidding it in any other way, where we can just explore having a contractor give us a day rate, and we go in there and just do the work. We have to define what it is that they're doing, and they have to put a number together for what they think they're gonna encounter.
And it's potluck.
It is.
Refresh my memory on what any match requirement would be of Growing Greener.
So the nice thing about the Growing Greener grant is that we have already, in our hand, the WRPP money. So there would be no true match, out-of-pocket match, that the borough would have to produce, because we can use the, we've confirmed that two grants can match against each other, and you can use each other as a match to one another. So the out-of-pocket cost would be producing the application, getting it in, which we, again, don't necessarily know exactly what that cost would be, but probably for a few thousand dollars, we could do that, particularly because we have a lot of information. We have the past information that we used for the last grant, so a lot of the content of the grant application comes from that.
Kurt, I'd like to thank you for coming in and telling us about this. I'd also like to thank Alora. I did send out an email, and I got a lot of my answers, my questions answered. My email might have come across pointed and a little disturbed, but understand that it's coming from a place for protecting my neighbors. And this isn't necessarily an engineering thing, but we're getting reports of rats in the daytime in that area at this point. I've always had the concern of the mosquitoes, ever since we had the divots in the, in the ground there. It created additional standing water, which was my concern with the basin all along, was the standing water. So my big issue and concern with all of this isn't that the market has changed and the prices have gone up, that, none of that is, that happens, that's business. My concern is, what do we do now? Because we have a situation. We have a situation where neighbors are calling, because they're seeing rats in their front yard, and they're being told by exterminators that the pit is a habitat for them. We do know that it's giving them cover, it's giving them drinking. If that habitat isn't there, rats keep moving, right? So the question is, now that we have this overgrown area that we didn't maintain all summer, what do we do to manage that population? I know, I talked to the Chair of the EDC, who is very, extremely helpful. There's some poison potential to help control that, but we've got to do something to ensure that the, that the dozens and dozens of houses that surround this thing aren't turned, aren't turned into rat hotels.
Well, I can inform you that, and I think we discussed this before, the borough is going to, in light of the circumstances surrounding the delay in construction, the borough is going to treat the retention basin, or have it treated for mosquito control, and also for rodents.
Okay. All right. Do we know when that'll start?
Eminently. Next week? Is next week, oh, tomorrow?
Okay, great. Thank you. I didn't know that. Thank you.
I'm sure this is a tough situation for our maintenance crews as well. I'm sure John's well aware of this. This is not, it never was an easy area when you have torrential rain every week. Like you said, we've had two summers where this has been going on. It's been really bad for this spring and the summer. So I'm sure, like you said, it's probably yea-deep with mud. So also, for them, safety reasons, I mean, they're getting down there, trying to at least get some of this cut back, so I'm sure this is not an easy process for them either. So we have to figure out how we can do that, and also make sure that they stay safe doing it as well. So we'll have to come up with some kind of solution, if it's gonna take that long to get something done down there, to at least keep it cut back. So, as I said, Scott will have to work with it and with the Public Works, and see if there's some way that we can keep it in a minimal control till we can get something done with it.
Long time ago.
Mr. Schroeder, do you or Gilmore have any experience with job order contracting?
Can you explain what?
Is it a new term for you?
Like a work, like a work order, where you sign a specific?
Yes.
Project, they do a certain amount of work.
It's kind of a newer buzzword in the industry, whereas people are contracting a little bid based on multipliers, in a sense, for a variety of work. And then they issue job, they issue job orders to go out and do the work. While I was at PSAB, one of the vendors there was the IU, it's a conglomerate, I guess, of Bucks County and a couple other ones, that have such a contract in place, and it may be something that the borough could look to utilize to jump on, like a state contract sort of thing, to have a contractor already on board and get a quote to have somebody do that.
We've, we're very open to any type of unique contracting opportunities that may exist. Matter of fact, one of the things I didn't mention, but we want to try and do, is, you know, when you put out a contract, you usually put out, you got 90 days to do the work. Well, if everybody's busy, but they're not in 90 days, you know, maybe we need to put out 180 days, but maybe give them 90 days from the day that they start. So if they want to come in and knock it out, they can do it in the first 90. If they want to wait 45 or 90 or whatever, they have that option. I'm not sure, I've never done that specifically, what you described. We would want to confirm with Solicitor's Office that that's even legal. You know, we follow the Purchasing Handbook requirements pretty specifically. There are situations in the handbook where you can do consortium-based state contracts. Often, it's, you know, for purchasing materials or things of that sort. Doesn't always necessarily, it certainly doesn't guarantee that it's any cheaper, because you're not gonna call the state-procured contractor from Easton and have them beat the guy who's from Bucks.
Well, the way that the contract is designed, it usually has a rate based on region or multiplier, so you may, you may get somebody down here or up there and with the multiplier, but I'll give you the contact information for the person.
You have to explore it. I'm pessimistic about it, but we're happy to explore it. Like I said, any option that we can find is, is worth considering.
All right. Anyone else have any other questions about the pit area?
Well, I think the borough engineer is looking for direction on how to proceed. Are they to prepare a Growing Greener grant application or not?
Yeah.
What's our cost gonna be?
A couple thousand dollars for the application. And the second part to the direction we're seeking is, we're right at design budget. We got that right, at least. So any other retooling of this project would have to be an out-of-pocket expense to the borough. So do we want to try and work with the Conservation District, with the contractor, do more soil sampling to see if we can reuse the soils on site, see if we can dry them out on site, pray for good weather? I mean, that's all a factor here that none of us have control of. Obviously, you know, just so we're all clear, we're talking about $65,000 of gap. If we get the funding, we close the gap. If we retool the project, we're spending money trying to close the gap. We might spend, say we spend $10,000 or $15,000 repackaging this, and we save $10,000 or $15,000 on the construction side at the same spot. We save $75,000 on the construction side, we close the gap. There's uncertainty in that.
Can you ask for more in the, the next grant to cover, does that cover design services as well, or is that just construction?
I don't know, if you know off the top of your head if it...
Yeah, I mean, we got funding through, probably not, they do cover.
So we, so we could technically ask for more with that to help?
We could, but then if we got the, you know, money we asked for, then we may not need that extra engineering money, too.
But I thought you said earlier that we could apply some of what we've already spent on design under.
It's something we would ask for. We're not sure. A lot of times, the grant agreements say...
From award forward, not retroactive.
That's correct.
Yes.
On very rare occasion, we've seen programs where they do let you submit your past bills that occurred prior to the contract award, and they'll cover them. Very rare occasion, worth the ask. It is possible, but I can't say that about this particular grant. But if we're gonna go that route, we're gonna at least ask.
So what would the anticipated cost be of retooling? If we're, if there's the potential of only saving $15,000 up to $65,000, would it cost us $25,000 to save 15? What would that anticipated cost be?
That's the one question I was nervous about answering tonight.
Trying to avoid.
And, you know, just, I think I've said this before, but, you know, there's, there's a reason why consulting is something where it's work order-based, contract-based, hourly-based, because, again, we don't know exactly what we're gonna do yet. We have to get in there, explore options, and figure it out. And whatever way that goes is kind of whatever it costs. My experience with what we talked about this morning with a lot of really smart people that work for us, you know, we think it could be around $10,000.
Okay.
Could be more.
To retool?
Yeah.
And then another couple thousand to also look to see about the grant at the same time?
We do have time in the current grant that we got. 2021, sometime, 2021, is when that grant term ends. So you have to spend the money by that time period.
Okay.
So we don't want that to sneak up on us, but it does give us all of 2020 to sort this stuff out. We have a budget cycle in there. We have this potential grant in there.
So we could conceivably authorize you to apply for the second grant to stack these two together? And if we get it, great, problem solved. If we don't, then we still have time to retool and come up with another option.
It's definitely an option.
You said first, actually, go and see if we can get more money at this point, and just hold it at bay and see if we can get it. What is, what is the turnover for when you apply for that? When you, they reviewed, and do you have any idea?
End of the year, probably.
They said sometime by the end of September, so within the next month or two.
Okay.
September, October, somewhere near.
Okay. All right.
Now, we've seen, you know, we've all seen how things can go. Sometimes the state, they got their budget on time, that's great.
Right.
Usually then, their programs come out on time, too, but every once in a while, one of those programs can get caught in some kind of snare, and they just drag out. But, you know, if things go the way they planned it, and how it's maybe cycled in the years past, September, October, we should hear.
Okay.
Mr. Mitchell, what's our cost gonna be to treat for mosquitoes and exterminate? It was a couple hundred dollars, I believe, each treatment, wasn't it, John?
Yeah, about $260, I believe, for each treatment. I don't know about the rats. That's something we'll take a look at tomorrow, and get a price for that tomorrow.
Is that just a seasonal thing, John? Do you have to do several times, or?
Probably once a month.
Once a month for the next few months, or probably until the weather changes.
All right. So each treatment would be about that much?
About that much.
Per treatment? Okay.
So we can manage that cost through the Public Works? I'd suggest going for the money grab first, if somebody's waiting for a suggestion from me, and then we'll figure it out from there.
Is that good? Everybody, that's a few thousand to put out and see if we can go after a grant. I think they said the only thing that's in our favor with this is that we're, we're there as far as design, the amount of money that we got, the full grant given, and it looks good. It's like you said, it's shovel-ready, and you're just stuck with that little bit that you need to make that difference, because it's such a bad area to work with. So it's probably the less of the evils is to go that route first, is try and see if we can get some more, see where it goes.
Is everybody comfortable with that?
Everybody okay with that? Everyone okay with that?
Do you know where you're gonna pull the money from?
No.
Okay.
We'll figure that out.
Still rejecting the bid?
Well, yeah, that, yeah, that'll come up. Do you need that tonight to be done? Can, you want us to wait till Monday and do it, whenever a regular meeting?
Oh, yeah. We have like 90 days to reject the bid.
Oh, okay. It's not, you had to have it tonight, go to it on, and we would do it. Okay, we'll do it on Monday, then.
We tried to explore if there was any option circumstance where we didn't have to reject them, but we haven't come up with anything on that.
Okay.
Kurt, is it a safe assumption that if we even had a little bid tonight, and suppose we put it off a year, it's gonna be at least 3% or 4% if we were to put it off for another year, the price will probably go up?
Absolutely. I would wager to bet that prices will go up by next year. That's the other side of the coin. I'm glad you brought that up. It's a point worth making.
Well, maybe we get a chance of more people bidding?
All those are possibilities that none of us have...
Right, and control on.
How many, I'll say, qualified contractors picked up, or got the plans online?
We always get lots of interest. It's on the PennBid electronic bidding site. There might have been two dozen contractors that expressed interest, maybe a dozen that downloaded the drawings, and some that asked questions during the process that really led us to believe we'd receive bids from them. But then 11 o'clock, you open up the bids, and there's one.
Yeah, 'cause I did log in, and I looked at the plan holders briefly, but I saw, you know, company like, you know, there were three rather large contractors that would do state highway work that got plans. I kind of thought that was odd, but maybe they were looking for a side job, or just to see what the scale of the project was.
They can't even hire the people to take on more work. That's, it's a labor shortage, it's a supply and demand.
And I'm sure this time of year, too, I mean, you can do construction for most of the year, but for this type of work, you're talking nicer weather. Yeah, it's a season for it, and you've got all their other seasonal work they're also doing, so...
Yeah, that's right.
That makes it really tough. Okay. All right, any other questions on this? All right.
Thank you. You're off the clock at 7:25.
All right, sounds good.
All right, thank you. Okay. Yeah, the presentation for Monsignor... Okay. Yeah, the presentation for Monsignor Eckert will be on Monday. So at this point, if there's anyone for public comment, no one? Okay.
Actually, could I make a comment on the presentation?
Sure.
We are developing a resolution for council to present. We all know him so well that if any of you has a unique item that you would like us to consider in the resolution, we'd be happy to do so. If you could just email that to me today or tomorrow, and we'll be happy to try to work it in for you if we can.
Okay. All right, thank you. Seeing we have no one for public comment tonight, then I will close that. Next thing would be, everyone got their minutes for May 20th. Make sure you take a look at them. If there's anything needs to be changed or you notice needs to be fixed, please let the office know about it. Financial, you'll be getting your treasury report, which is your budget to take a look at, a financial statement, I should say. And then, of course, you'll get your bill list. If you can, try and get to the office staff or Scott and let them know that there's an issue. If you find something, you need some questions answered about the bills. The mayor's not here tonight. Next, we're just going to go on to the action items and we only have a few of them here, but we'll go over them. I guess, Scott, you can answer the first one for me. The 9A, call for motion to reauthorize a resolution to become a business partner in Pendott's ECMS. We did do this, correct?
We did. Council was kind enough to approve a resolution for us. In fact, it was the borough engineer who just left who provided it to us.
Okay.
Pendott is being awfully persnickety about this and doesn't like the format that was used, so has sent us another one. So we're basically just asking you to reauthorize a new version of what you already authorized.
Okay. They want their version. Got it. We'll have, we'll get a copy of this this week in the packet?
Yes.
Okay. Brittany just laughs.
Yes, imagine that. They are with this ECMS system. I don't know what all the drama's about, but...
And this is basically to be able to, when we're working on a project, is to get your information back and forth with them.
Electronically, yeah.
Right, electronically without, make it a little, suppose make it a little easier? Well, we're just, we're just saying.
It actually stands for Electronic Communication Management System, I believe.
Got it.
Isn't that email?
Yeah.
I thought that's what email was.
Okay. Of course, we just talked about the basin. Keep your fingers crossed and hopefully we can get some more money because that is a needed project to definitely get done. The next one, 9C, call for motion to approve the amendment to the bylaws for the public library, require members of the library board to be residents of Morrisville Borough. The only thing, I'm sorry, I didn't make my note for the residency. This is actually something that back in 2014, when they were trying to do bylaw amendments back then, it's something that was talked about putting in. It's the only one of our board or committees that doesn't have that clause in there. So they did meet and they did approve that. Did they send anything over, a copy of the change yet, Scott, or no?
I don't think we received anything from them, no.
Okay, because it's basically going to be the same. They're running on the 1998. That's the only amendment that's going to be put in there, addendum put in there. So I guess we can get hold of Diane, ask her if she can send a copy of that over with that, that change if we can give that to council. Because I don't know if council even has their bylaws. I mean, I do, but I don't know if everybody else does.
Did they even do it in writing or just by motion of the board?
They, I believe they drew it up. Did they, Holly?
There was notations on the old bylaws and we voted on it a week ago.
Okay.
Almost a week ago.
So she still has to type?
She has to slide that little...
I type it up and then?
And it was handwritten, just to type it up and send it over to you.
Okay, I'll, I'll get to her then about that. Make sure she has that sent over to the office.
So, Madam President, this is literally just a change to ensure that the library board, or the library that is paid for by the taxpayers of Morrisville
Right.
Have a board of residents.
Correct.
Got it.
Correct. Now, I will say, because it was brought up about, through the years, there's been times where there's not a quarm or they couldn't get enough people to be on it. We were very fortunate. There's new people that have been put on it, so they have more than they need for their quarm. We do have it in our ordinance that creates the library that states that council can appoint two representatives and it can be to council if that was to say, let's happen. And you couldn't get enough people, it would be up to the council to then say, is anyone willing to step up and be on the board for a while to cover that? So it's covered either way by the ordinance.
And nothing keeps a council person from being on that board, right?
No.
Okay.
Nope. I think we've always looked at it that, to give the residents the first choice of that. And I think the council has like all these subcommittees are already on, so maybe they don't want to deal with another board. But it's always nice if the residents get a chance to be on the, on the boards first, I think is the main, main thing with that. So that's what that was.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The next one was the library board appointment. It's been advertised for the last three months. The only thing I'll ask Scott about the motion, because it's the complete, the unexpired term from someone that left because they had moved. So there's actually about a year and a half left. That's why the date says March 1st, 2021. So it would be the library board appointment for the unexpired three-year term to expire on March 1st, 2021, because they would be fulfilling the remainder of that. Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay. So otherwise, it's going to be confusing, yep, to complete the unexpired term. Anyone have any questions on any of that? I think it was pretty, pretty easy this week, pretty explanatory. There isn't any unfinished business that I know of unless you have some, right?
I actually have a couple of housekeeping items to discuss with you all tonight and it may end up adding a couple of agenda items to the agenda.
Okay.
First is, is this, is this okay?
Yes, sure.
First is, we received Friday, an application, facility use application for Williamson Park for the annual night out in Morrisville. This is to take place on August 6th of 2019. So we will add this to the agenda if council has no objection for this year's event.
Okay.
Also, council will recall a couple of meetings back, I actually believe it was an executive session, I brought to your attention the fact that the borough does not carry and historically has not carried Heart and Lung Act coverage under its policies of insurance. This is special insurance policy for uniformed employees of the police department. We did get a quote back from our insurance broker. It would be approximately $13,000 a year in additional insurance cost to add this line of coverage, but that could very well be one claim, would essentially be worth having the coverage.
Is that per employee or just the actual?
What, the $13,000? No, it's $13,000 a year
A premium.
Based on our uniformed payroll.
Got it.
That covers uniformed personnel.
Okay.
So this is an expenditure of funds and it's a non-budgeted item. It's up to council. If you would like us to add this to our current policies of insurance. However, the carriers only let us do such an addition prior to renewal, which is coming up in a couple of weeks. I think it starts August 1st. Yeah, I think they go together.
I think for the same time, the work must come.
Yeah, so it's coming up, so we would need to let them know like this week.
Does the $13,000 get paid upfront or is it something we could pay monthly to them?
I think we pay the, yeah, we do 10 payments a year over the course of the year for the whole, for the whole insurance package.
Okay, thank you.
So this would just be baked into that, added into that. It is, of course, going to be an increase, but, and I, I get why it hasn't been done in the past because it's a $13,000 annual expense based on flipping a coin of something that might happen. But that's the nature of insurance in general. So if you would like us to proceed with this, we will let them know to add it to the policy. Otherwise, we would have to wait until this time next year to do it if we wanted to add the change.
I think it should be on the agenda for a vote.
Well, that's what I'm asking you here tonight.
Yeah.
Can we add, do you want it added for Monday's agenda? Is council comfortable with this or?
Yeah, I think it's something that we should be looking into. We've, like I said, it's a case where you just never know when you're going to have to use it. And if you don't have it, it's going to be pretty costly.
Okay. Does the insurance carrier have any sort of information on that, like a risk analysis of, you know, how much an actual, or the average case costs versus what you're going to pay in insurance?
No, because we have such a small, a small pool and we have so few HLA claims that, and each HLA claim is vastly different. I mean, one could be a day, one could be for a lifetime, a person's lifetime.
But if they offer the policy, they do it amongst other boroughs or townships or?
Yeah, I'm sure they do.
Can they give us some ideas? The average payout, you know, $15,000 for a year or is it, you know, $3,000 to give us some sort of idea of?
I mean, this type of thing, I mean, it is kind of highly variable and, you know, if you're talking about different localities, you're really comparing, not only based on the size of the uniformed workforce, but the sort of the, the working environment they're in. So, you know, the, the average payment could fluctuate wildly. I mean, if you're talking about, you know, officers that, you know, are at high risk in the line of duty in an urban setting, I mean, you're talking about much greater average payouts in those localities. So I'd be surprised if they had it broken out to that extent, but I think that they're looking at it probably because you have a relatively small police department and not a whole lot of, you know, wounded officers or anything. I mean, not in that sense, you know? You have somebody that had a worker's comp injury that, you know?
So I'm like, when you're, when you're saying the payout, are you talking about the payout for the municipality to purchase the, the insurance? Or are you talking about the payout to?
They pay out on per claim.
Paying claims.
That's what I just want to clarify.
It's not dissimilar, by the way, from the worker's comp system where, you know, I mean, you're, you're receiving benefits for your salary, but at some point, there is an effort to move you off of that regular, a regular thing and close out the claim for a lump sum. So that, that can vary too. And that fluctuates with the, the individual case.
Do we have any concept of how often these things happen in Bucks County in general?
No.
No, no concept whatsoever? Okay, just, just curious.
It's like trying to say, how many worker's comp claims are there in Bucks County?
But we could probably find that out.
Probably because they end up registering with the state of Pennsylvania. So I'm sure the state of Pennsylvania has statistics by county, but HLA claims, no.
Okay. They are few and far between. I do understand that though. Yeah.
So have we had any claims ourselves in the borough?
I'm sorry?
Have we had any claims in the borough for this?
You have over the years, yes, and they're usually paid direct out of pocket by the borough. And I should point out that, and if we add this policy, it will not cover retroactively claims that may be in hand or pending. It would only be for new claims going forward.
Do we have a dollar amount of claims that we've paid out in the past?
We do not.
Just to try to get an idea of what?
Yeah. We don't.
Because we're paying out of pocket, wouldn't that just show up as, as somebody's income? It would just be, we'd just be paying them. So it might be, unless there's good record keeping. Was there good record keeping?
Right.
I think it would be hard to determine which ones were just their regular pay and which ones were on that.
I mean, it's salary. So if you have somebody who's significantly injured, you know, they're drawing their regular salary.
Right.
And, you know, I would assume that most officers are making more than 13 grand a year.
Oh, yeah. I would hope.
Well, keep in mind that since this applies to uniformed personnel, it includes part-time as well as full-time.
Right, correct.
All right. So we will add that to the agenda for Monday.
Okay.
And I'll let the carrier know that we're leaning in that direction. So hold the train for us.
So we're up to...
The next item I have for you, I believe this was in your special delivery packet, is a request from the senior center to place a new outdoor sign that they are obtaining with a grant on what we believe is borough property. It would be located on that grassy square area in between the two entrances to what is actually the borough's parking lot at the end of East Cleveland Avenue.
Yeah.
So before they go through the litany of zoning approval, since it's borough property, they looked at three locations and of the three locations, the, the one that they seem to think is it's best suited for happens to fall on borough property. So they would like to know if council will agree to allow the placement.
That's where they get the most traffic coming in and out for all their different activities. So it's not like you're going to miss it right there. And, yeah, yeah. And it's, from what we can see, it's approximately the size of what the sign is down there for the courthouse as it is. So it's not going to be some over huge
It's not.
Sign, yeah.
Based on the, the plant, the documentation, it's not huge.
Yeah, I, I don't know if it's exact, but it's pretty close to the sign, what the sign dimensions are for the district court.
Only quite, and, and this isn't for, for here. They're just asking for use of the, of the property itself. But I guess from a zoning perspective, they'll have to determine whether or not, how bright it's going to be and all that. That, that'll go through the zoning.
All that will be part of the zoning.
Got it.
Yeah, they'll, they'll tweak all that kind of stuff for that.
Yeah, that was my question. Will the sign, since it's digital, will that be, have limited hours so as not to disturb the neighbors at night?
It will probably be 24/7, just like the sign for the district court is.
Okay. Now, this sign though, is it digital, it's a changing sign. The district court, is that a fixed?
The district court is a fixed illuminated sign.
Right.
And this is too, except for the message part at the, across the bottom there.
Okay.
That is changeable.
And I think from when I was at the zoning for the one they were doing to school, I think they also are able to work on like the, how bright the lighting is on that. I'm pretty sure from what I remember what that meeting went on when they set the...
I know, I know from driving down 95 and certain highways, some of these lights are blinding.
Yeah.
So.
I believe the zoning board has it within its prerogative to set hours of day that it can be operational.
Exactly.
We could at the borough too, if we developed like a memorandum of understanding with them that first gives them permission to do, put it on there. Second, sets the terms of why and how they can have it.
Yeah, all depending on how complicated you wish to make this, we can, yes.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, I would...
I'd like to make it so that in 10 years, if none of us are up here, somebody can read a document, know who owns it, who's responsible for it and whether it should still be there.
Right. So does it sound like this can go on the agenda for Monday?
Are they removing the old sign that's there?
The old sign that's there is not by the parking lot. It's by the front door.
Right.
And that sign would remain.
That's the courthouse sign.
And just have two signs.
No, no, I believe she's referring to the senior center sign.
Correct.
Well, technically, they would have three signs because there's also a sign on the tunnel
Right.
Entrance at the rear of the property.
They may decide. You're talking about the one where the flowers are, right? Danielle?
The benches.
Yeah.
I'm talking about the one, there's the original sign, which is by the front door. Nobody uses, well, a lot of people use the front door. But yes, that sign by the front door was, I, that's what I was asking, is that sign staying? If they're going to have this digital sign, so they're going to have that sign plus another sign.
I believe it is their intent to keep the existing signs unless the zoning hearing board process results in a different conclusion. But the other, the two existing signs they have are not illuminated.
No.
No.
I mean, they're lit, but they're not illuminated signs.
Yeah. And at some point, if they put the other sign up, they may decide they don't want that other one there. It's, you know what I mean?
All right. So we'll add that to your agenda for Monday.
Okay.
And I believe last but not least is more of a heads up than a request at this time anyway. Two things I should make you aware of that are kind of interrelated. One is the municipal authority is looking at converting their finance and accounting package from AMS to another vendor. This is part of their RF meter technology upgrade and quite frankly, is probably long overdue. John Wurinda and I have been talking about this. We've sat in on a couple of presentations that the MMA has had with at least one prospective vendor admins on the new finance and accounting package because we are in agreement internally that it probably makes sense for us to piggyback with the MMA and take advantage of economies of scale and utilize one program. with the MMA and take advantage of economies of scale and utilize one program for both the MMA and the borough. This is something the MMA has targeted for either next year or the year after, but they're still in the process of conducting due diligence with various vendors. That is going to be a sizable investment in technology. Our share of what it would, our per rata share of the cost, I believe we've figured at what around $50,000. So I want that to just be on your radar screen for a future decision to be made about that. The other kind of part two of this is there was a item in one of your deliveries recently about Tracer. Tracer is an asset management program for municipalities and, and other government agencies about asset management, workflow management, permits, inspections, basically tracking all of your fixed assets and infrastructure electronically. We've been talking to McMahon and Associates who owns the Tracer software and some surrounding municipalities that are using Tracer. And we're considering, we don't have all the information together yet, coming to you with a recommendation that we buy into Tracer and use that predominantly for public works, but you could also run fleet management through it, which would include all borough vehicles. We would have every stormwater inlet, every manhole cover, every fire hydrant, every, all with GPS location data. So this would be parks, public property, everything. So that's kind of the, the part two of what I'm informing you of tonight, although we might end up in a scenario where we would do Tracer first, then do the finance and accounting package alongside in partnership with the MMA. And then the MMA might at a later date do their implementation of Tracer subsequent to all their RF meter upgrades. So long story short. Yeah. Keep this in the, in the dark recesses of your mind that, oh, yeah, yeah. I remember Scott talking about something like that a thousand years ago. That will be coming to you to talk more about the finance and accounting software to upgrade and convert from AMS into something more viable and to possibly implement Tracer along with that, but perhaps even before doing the finance and accounting piece. And it's a much, much less expensive investment, probably around $7,000 to $10,000 to get a fully integrated. So if you have any questions about either of those things, I'd be happy to talk to you more about it now or?
I have a comment.
In passing.
So I'm a huge proponent of good office infrastructure and, and good data management. I think it's long overdue. However, I could tell you, I'm going to have a litany of que, of questions. I'm sure Mr. Bowers is going to as well, as far as like accesses, who's got accesses, how, how segmented is the MMA from the borough, who's going to have access to what information? How is that information going to be inputted? There's going to be a lot of questions of separation that I'm going to have because it's going to be pretty important that that information isn't getting lumped into one report.
Yeah. We, we've already talked about that with Edmonds and it would be a completely segregated system. However, we might have certain employees who would be able to have access to certain areas of both to, to share data, even if it's just on a limited basis. Because you could grant someone access temporarily and then, you know, remove it later on if there was some data migration needed from one side to the other. But there would be like a firewall, for lack of a better word, between the two. We wouldn't all be in each other's house, if, you know what I mean?
I'm sorry. Well, I was going to say with Tracer, it's, you're saying it's a good to be seven to 10K. How, how does this save us money? How does this make us more efficient? And how much annually could this potentially be saving taxpayers?
Well, there will certainly be a, a time and savings component to it. It's hard to put a, a finger on a dollar amount right now because it's more about operational efficiency than a, a direct cost. But certainly savings will be realized. Employee, an employee would be now, you know, with Tracer on a tablet implementing, you know, inputting data from the field versus, you know, having to come to Borough Hall or to Public Works to do that. You know, right now our operational efficiencies in the field could be, yeah, you see John shaking his head. Could be summarized as a, as a series of colorful Post-it notes. Whereas this is going to be completely electronic. It'll be, you know, we'll be able to integrate the website into this. We'll be able to integrate email into this so that, you know, a to-do list or work orders or whatever is open, if it's not dealt with in a certain amount of time, it escalates to the next person, but, 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 you know, all that kind of stuff.
You won't be buying a wrench when you already have 18 and it gives you the ability to, to do the amortization schedules on the values without manually doing the math. It's, it's probably going to do all that work for you. All the assets are tracked and, and the values are adjusted yearly.
Okay.
So is this something that John or any of, any of the public works can do directly? Let's say he gets a call for whatever it is on Harding Avenue. He can take that tablet then to Harding Avenue and put in whatever is needed?
Yep.
And then that would go to everyone's tablet?
Yep. Even a phone call would ultimately be entered into the system. It would be entered in as a phone call. And that will be assigned to a person. If there's parts that have to be pulled from inventory, that will be associated with that task. Like I said, if the task isn't dealt with timely or remains open for a period of time, it alerts someone, it escalates up the chain. Virtually, virtually will track everything we do.
I'm sure it'd be helpful for your inventory when you have to order new stuff. You're going to know if you have a part that breaks or you need to have another part, that you've got listed what you, what you, what your needs are. So there's your financial need of what the?
And you're sure you don't have one sitting in the, in the closet?
Well, plus keep in mind, there are a lot of hands in the toolbox because we share a lot of parts inventory and equipment with the municipal authority and vice versa, of course. So it's good to, there should be no surprises ever. Because Tracer should tell us exactly what we have, where it is, the last person who touched it, what it gets used for, how often, everything.
And even when something needs replaced, you're going to know when it's, it's wore out.
That's right.
You'd be able to track, I'm sure, its usage.
It'll track equipment and vehicles, their maintenance schedule, mileage, hours on a particular piece of equipment, everything.
Okay.
So the seven to 10K, is that for the software only? That doesn't include, we're talking about these tablets and things like that? Is that included?
That would not include the tablets, but actually we already have some tablets that we would start with. That were former tablet rejects by Borough Council. That I use, I use one of them on a regular basis. So we've retooled those. So we would start with that as kind of experimental pilot, get people trained with them. And then, you know, progress into something more like a workbook, a portable workbook down the road. Yeah. Something tougher. Yeah.
Why Tracer as opposed to other asset management systems?
We're not married to Tracer. We've looked at, I've looked at a couple. I have some experiences with some other programs from prior, my prior lives. But the municipalities that are around us that are using Tracer seem to be very, very satisfied with what they're getting.
And is it, you said it's owned by McMahon and Associates?
McMahon and Associates is, they're an engineering firm. They own Tracer. They developed it and they manage it. Yeah.
Is there any chance of that getting bought out anytime in the near future and merged with something else and it disappearing and not being supported?
Anything can happen at any time. But I, I don't imagine a circumstance where they would be willing to lose the government clients they've established in Tracer.
And who would?
In fact, if you're interested in a demo, I think if you Google Tracer or McMahon Associates from the brochure that was in your recent delivery, I think you can actually do an online demo of what Tracer includes.
Okay. And?
I'm surprised you haven't done it already.
I wanted to wait to see what it was in there for. Who does, what's the, what's the operational cost every year for licensing and maintenance?
There is a, a charge every year for it. And quite frankly, it's about or less than what we're spending annually on AMS. So.
Okay. And who administers the system? So suppose you go in there and you need to change a workflow or you need to change rights for somebody to have access to this or that?
Local administrators can do that onsite. If it's highly technical, we simply call the help desk and they do it for us.
And that's included in the yearly maintenance?
Unless there's some programming change that would be required, there would be no additional cost for that sort of thing. So I just wanted to put both of these things on your radar. So there are no surprises down the road, but we'll be coming back to you with more information on both as more information becomes available.
Okay. Thank you.
I got one thing.
Okay.
And I had told Scott that we want to get this accomplished. As you know, the borough is participating in the nationwide opioid litigation. There has been a request from the council that's handling it on behalf of the Plan of Steering Committee to get some documents executed. It's basically, this is not uncommon in this type of litigation, you know, broad-based litigation where there's a lot of proprietary information that's coming out. It's basically an agreement to be bound by a proposed confidentiality agreement. And the information that's going to be covered by the confidentiality agreement is by and large what are known as suspicious purchase orders. This is like the, the smoking gun of liability in this case. All throughout the country, distributors, drugstore chains were making and filling extraordinarily, like just raising red flags, kind of suspicious orders for, you know, a large amounts of opiate medications that, you know, far surpass the locality's needs and were clearly earmarked for illicit use. So DEA's accumulated a lot of this stuff. We're going to have access to that information, which will allow us to file an amended complaint, which will expand the scope of discovery and help us greatly in the litigation. So basically what is, what we're being asked to sign, and council's already taken the official action to do whatever is necessary to engage in this litigation. So it doesn't require an additional vote or anything. It just requires official signatures. But just so everybody understands what's at issue, it requires obviously the materials that are disclosed to not be used outside the litigation. Doesn't matter. It's not going to end up on council's desk. It's being used by national council to help to move the litigation along. But having read the existing complaint, the 230-page plus that will make your blood boil, this is the, this is really where it's at. I mean, you know, the, the stuff that makes you just want to scream when you're reading about it, i- is the stuff that's covered in this confidentially, confidentiality order. Again, it, this doesn't require any independent action by council. You've already taken the action. It's just an administrative sort of subtask. But the sooner it's done, the quicker they can get this thing filed.
Okay. Thank you.
We're going to add that to the agenda for Monday, Mike?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
I have a question on that. And I, it's an assumption, but I'm assuming there's nothing with that that conflicts with the fact that we're a public governing body and right to no laws or anything. We're covered by essentially attorney work.
Everything is covered by, number one, the federal court has exclusive jurisdiction over anything that's produced in this litigation. This is not considered a public record that would be with, first off, it's not going to be in the possession of the borough. You're never going to have personal access to that. I mean, it's being restricted to use the attorneys for the parties.
Okay.
I mean, literally, there's thousands of municipalities, counties, states, you know, all participating in this. So it's nothing that's within the scope of a right to know law. And the, the agreement to be bound basically is just to give a comfort level through, throughout all the actors and especially the DEA, that this is only going to be used for what it's going to be used for, because it's not a public record from their perspective.
So it's more or less an agreement basically for our solicitor acting on our behalf with them because since we're not even going to?
Well, you're, you're the litigant. All right. So I mean, it's really no different than, you know, signing a stipulation on behalf of, if I had a, a guy who had been injured in a car accident, he had to stipulate to something in the litigation. I, I just had a case, for instance, where Enterprise, they were disclosing all their sort of hiring training data because there was an issue as to whether they had rented to somebody they shouldn't have been renting to. That would have, they were only willing to do that under a confidentiality agreement. I'm not crazy about it, but it's just, it's the fact of life now, you know, and it's common. You know, I mean, you could say it conflicts with the presumption of open courts, open records. But you're talking about some very powerful interests who have some big potential liability. So that's what it comes down to.
I have something for Mr. Mitchell. If at all possible, going forward, I'm not asking for this one to change, but when something's going through the zoning hearing board and being advertised, can we not only just have the parcel number, but the address as well be advertised? Because if I'm, if I'm a neighbor and there's a zoning, there's a zoning board hearing that is my neighbor's house, I don't know how from the parcel number, I'm supposed to really know that's my, my neighbor's house.
Yeah. The zoning hearing board notice includes both.
It didn't. Not on the last one. Maybe I'm, no, I'll reread it. I'll double check it, but I didn't, I didn't see it in there. I just saw the parcel numbers.
I thought it had both.
No, I didn't.
I'll reread it, but I don't think it did.
Okay.
On that note, I'm going to ask, can we put their application online for those who can't make it to the borough to see during business hours? The documents that are available here for review.
Before the zoning gets it?
No, zoning has it. It says, the notice now says that you can come into the borough to review them.
Oh, I got it.
That I'll have to look at because it's going to depend on the size of the documents.
Okay.
Yeah. Never thought of that. Yeah.
Anything else you want to ask, Paul?
Not related to that. I do have an item I'd like to add to the agenda.
Okay.
Well, you got to talk to the council president about that.
All right. We got E, F, G. This would be, what is it?
A motion to adopt a revised fee schedule that includes $150 for the short-term lodging ordinance, rental inspection and program registration fee.
How'd you come up with that amount?
Based on discussions with Scott and the zoning officer, I started out at about $120, assuming two hours of code official time. Scott was of the opinion that that probably wouldn't cover it. He was looking for 200. So I negotiated down in the middle and we can always revisit it next year if it's not meeting our needs. But we can also revisit it now if anybody has any better suggestions.
You're asking for an addendum to the, to the fee schedule to add that one item?
Yeah.
That gets done during the budget time and then you vote the fee schedule. So you want that changed on now before the change?
So we can implement.
So we can start implementing it.
I informed the councilman that we're naturally going to be bringing a revised fee schedule to council for its consideration, probably in October-ish timeframe like we did last year. We have five or six things that still need to be updated that we haven't done previously, this being one of them. But he seems interested in.
From my point of view, we passed the short-term lodging ordinance and as part of that ordinance, it needs this fee to be able to start being utilized. So I'd like to do it as soon as possible.
Are we sure the 150 is enough?
No.
10%? No?
No. But we'll be, but we'll be. No, but we'll be, but we'll be updating it in a handful of months anyway. And it'll give us that time to really analyze and see what the cost is. If we don't put anything in, we are nothing, right? So it gives us, it gives us a jumping off point. We could, maybe it's too much, we'll have to see.
Yeah, we don't want to be excessive, but we don't want to do it to our hurt either.
Right.
Yeah.
So say your motion again there, Justin, adopt.
Maybe this listener could help with better language that would be a.
I think it's a call for, call for a motion to amend the fee schedule to include a fee of $150 for the short-term lodging facilities ordinance. I'm not a lawyer, but.
You slept on a holiday on a Christmas.
Leave that up to you to put that on there then. I will leave you to do the wording on that.
I just saved you $50 on this.
I love it.
All right. Nine H. I think we got them all right. E, F, G, H. Okay, is there anything else, Scott?
That's all I have.
Oh, and the attorney, right, so he was nine H.
Yes, the solicitor added.
Nine I. We're going to get the whole alphabet before the end of the year.
Well, Virginia keeps wanting to go to Z, so I'm trying to.
Funny. All right, so this would be nine I.
It's all easy stuff.
And the confidentiality is nine H. Holiday, okay. All right. I guess we're up to borough officials. The only thing I'd like to actually make mention is the, thanking the school district that did vote on June 26th to approve the Lurder program that we just put in place. Very nice, I'm sure that was a unanimous vote. And then I also want to thank Councilman Ted Parker and Councilman Mike Yeager.
Danielle.
And Danielle also Larson that attended the meeting. I wasn't able to attend that meeting that night. So they were able to answer any questions and speak on our behalf. So the more support we had, I think also helped at those meetings. They appreciated that and whatever questions you guys could answer for them. So I really appreciate you all showing up there and doing that. So it's a win-win for us to do that. And I think our next step is just the county at this point, right? We'll do their portion.
Do we know when they're meeting?
I believe the RDA told me this is docketed for a commissioner's meeting this month.
Okay, good.
But sometimes their summer meetings are on the road because of the Grange Fair. I forget if it's July or August.
Yeah.
So it could end up getting bounced.
Okay.
Probably by the end of the summer, we'll, we'll have something from them.
Okay. Anyone else from borough officials? Okay. Then I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all on paper?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we are adjourned at 8:11.
So everybody who bet an hour and a half, give me your money, please.